Council members, are we ready to begin?
Good morning. We can get started, Madam Clerk.
I have a letter dated October 27, 2025, Laura Johnson, Clerk of Council, New Orleans City Council, 1300 Pagito Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70112. Dear Madam Clerk, pursuant to my authority in Section 3-107.5 of the Home Rule Charter of the City of New Orleans, there will be a special city council meeting on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. The meeting will be limited to discussion and consideration of matters relative to the current financial condition of the city, including, without limitation, the status of the general fund and any changes to expected revenue or funding, and any other matters that may properly come before the council. Please make the necessary arrangements to have this special meeting cable cast live on the government access television channel and taped for recasting in the future. Sincerely, J.P. Morell, President of the New Orleans City Council. Roa Kow, Councilmember Morell. Councilmember Moreno. Councilmember Jeruso.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember King. Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas. We have seven members. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. My understanding is that we still have some documents being prepared. Can we go to first reads first?
We don't have them.
We... Council members, we can do the reconsideration at least. The zoning matter?
Yeah, we can do reconsideration first. That's fine.
For reconsideration, line over as amended, M. 25530 by Councilmembers Morell and Harris, directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to the ordinance, 4,264 MCS as amended. The Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 19 to establish an interim zoning district to be named the Transient Lodging Interim Zoning District, the intent of which is to require the approval of a conditional use by ordinance for the following uses when they are designated as permitted uses in the text of Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance: hotel, motel, hostel, short-term rental, commercial, timeshare, embed and breakfast, principal and accessory. The transient lodging uses shall be subject to all provisions and CZO related to conditional uses, included but not limited to Section 4.3 or other regulations in the CZO that may relate to any of the transient lodging uses, included but not limited to the use standards, bulk and yard standards, parking requirements, and stormwater management. Shall continue to apply to the uses if approved under the terms of this IZD unless expressly waived by the ordinance. Where any of the transient lodging uses are prohibited in the CZO, they shall remain prohibited uses under this IZD. We need to vote to reconsider this motion.
I'll move. Second by Councilmember Jeruso, please vote your machines. Six yays, no nays. Seven yays, no nays. The motion to reconsider is adopted.
Now we need to withdraw this motion. Because we'll have a substitute to read it to the...
I will move. Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Moreno. Please vote your machines. Seven yays, no nays. The... It is withdrawn.
We have substitute motion, M. 25530, by Councilmembers Morell and Harris, directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider amendment to ordinance number 4,264 MCS as amended. The Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 19 to establish a new interim zoning to be named the Transient Lodging Interim Zoning District, the intent of which is to require the approval of a conditional use by ordinance for the following uses when they are designated as permitted uses in the text of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance: hotel, motel, hostel, short-term rental, commercial, timeshares, bed and breakfast, principal and accessory. The transient lodging uses shall be subject to all provisions in the CZO related to conditional uses, included but not limited to Section 4.3 or other regulations in the CZO that may relate to any of the transient lodging uses, included but not limited to use standards, bulk and yard standards, parking requirements, stormwater management. Shall continue to apply to the uses if approved under the terms of this IZD unless expressly waived by the ordinance approving the conditional use. Where any of the transient lodging uses are prohibited in the CZO, they shall remain prohibited uses under this IZD. Further, when the City Planning Commission receive a request for a conditional use for any proposed transient lodging use, it should consider all criteria set forth in the CZO for a conditional use for the proposed use, as well as the criteria specific to the CZO. Council members, we need to... Vote to add this to the agenda?
I'll move. Second by Councilmember Harris. Please vote your machines. Seven yays, no nays. It is added to the agenda?
No. Y'all can hold on, discuss it.
Do you want to say... Essentially, this is the same item we passed previously with the removal of the NPP.
Council members, just for the... So the record is clear, in case there's any confusion. The reason that we're taking this up, even though the meeting call talks about budget matters, it also includes any other matter that may properly come before the council. Per our rules, if we vote to reconsider an item, we have to do that at our next meeting. So this is our only opportunity to reconsider. And that's why it's on the agenda and was noticed.
Thank you. Adam? All right. So... We already suspended the rules, I think. Are we voting to approve the motion at this point? All right. The machine has not reflect that, so I will move by voice vote. Uh, movie... There you go. Motion to adopt. There you go. Oh, I don't have a card, so... But come on up, Mr. Burnside.
I only wanted to bring to the council's attention that the wording here, which says, "Whereas assuming the City Planning Commission considers a report on its October 28 meeting and therefore blah, blah, blah." I was there yesterday because a lot of people were there for the transient lodging study, and it was not dealt with at the CPC meeting yesterday. And I was told by Stephen Cole and others that it would either be posted on their website yesterday or today, depending on just the CPC's website and/or the contractor's website who did the report. So the transit study was not addressed yesterday at the CPC meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Swanziger, does it require us to change the motion, or is it fine?
Could you give me a minute to answer that question? Can we perhaps move to another item? I'm going to need one second.
Yes, we can go to... I believe the first reads are now over there, so let's do the first reads. And, uh, Madam Clerk, we may want to pause between first reads for council comment. Thank you. So let's do the first one.
Orders on... Ordinance on first read. Ordinance calendar 35,295 by Councilmember Morell. An ordinance to ordain and establish Sections 90-151 through 90-165 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to codify the successful reforms of the Department of Police developed through the federal consent decree and otherwise supervisor specs thereto.
Thank you. This is going to be, obviously, go through the committee process, but I just want to kind of give a quick over... Quick overlay of what we're doing. Um, what we're doing is, obviously, it is evident that the NOPD will be leaving the consent decree sooner or... Sooner rather than later. This simply seeks to codify some of the reforms that were done over the last couple of years so that we don't have backsliding. This will be going to criminal justice for further conversation, but I just want to kind of give an overview of what it is being filed today. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other council comment? Seeing none. Next item.
Ordinance calendar 35,296 by Councilmember Morell. An ordinance to call an election on November 3, 2026, at which the electors of the City of New Orleans will be asked to approve an amendment to the Home Rule Charter, Section 6-103, to add provisions intended to ensure that spending remaining consists with the approved annual operating budget and otherwise supervisor specs thereto.
Thank you. Uh, this charter amendment, which will... Is on first read today, seeks to rectify a problem I've cited for the last couple of years, which is that the budget, as it's currently situated in the charter, is a suggestion. It is a suggestion which administrations, multiple administrations, have used to move money around, and in this worst situation, we have deficit spending, where we spent money that we did not actually have. What this seeks to do is to essentially mirror other jurisdictions, as well as the state, in that when we pass a budget in December, that is the budget. And by that, I mean that in order for items to be moved from different departments or to fill budget holes, there have to be actual council meetings where the administration has to say, "I am moving this money from Department A to plug a hole in Department B." Further, it instructs the Finance Department and the CAO going forward to not deficit spend. If something is not identified in the budget as having a lot I am to spend, it cannot be spent. Um, this is a first read. This will go through the typical process. And the goal of putting this on the November agenda is so that... Sorry, the November election is so that the maximum voter turnout will be realized, so the public can weigh in on it. So that simplifies what we're doing. It's also an effort to try and explain to the state and the people of the city that what has occurred this year will never happen again. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance calendar 35,297 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Morell, Moreno, Harris, King, Green and Thomas. An ordinance to ordain Sections 70-1415.344 through 70-415.349 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to establish the City of New Orleans Employee Emergency Payroll Fund and otherwise supervisor specs thereto.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, this is an ordinance that would do a couple of things. First, it would create a fund for which the revenue bonds that are proposed would go into. Number two, it would set forth the conditions for releasing those. And then number three, and I think we'll talk about this more when we get to the resolution, that we will suspend the rules to add. It provides a number of reports that need to be submitted to the council and the auditor in order to move forward with distribution. Thank you.
Don't we have resolutions as well?
Yes, Adam is looking at it.
Do you want to go back to...
Yep, let's go back to reconsideration.
Mr. Burnside's points are well taken, but I don't think this motion is contingent upon the CPC considering the transient lodging study. I under... I've not seen the meeting, so I can't attest to how thoroughly it considered, whether it did or it didn't. But this... This merely says that the CPC has announced its intent to do something, but that's not a predicate to our actions. I think we can move forward.
Thank you. I think that clarifies the issue, Mr. Burnside. With that, I'll move to adopt. Six yays. Is someone missing? Seven yays, no nays. It is adopted.
We have Resolution R. 25560 by Councilmember Morell. Stating that the New Orleans City Council formally requests the Louisiana Legislative Auditor to perform an investigation into the management and use of city's finances, included but not limited to budget and accounting practices, hiring practices, employee augmentation, overtime contracts, and federal funding for fiscal years 2022 through 2025. The purpose of this requested investigation is to reliably determine the actual financial health of the city and to make recommendations that help the city chart a path forward to resolve the budget crisis. And there is an amendment by Councilmember Morell. The amendment is to Resolution R. 25560 to remove all references to the State Inspector General, correct the name of the Finance Department and the title and name of its director, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Burnside.
It's an interesting resolution, and I've always tried to understand the difference between resolutions, motions and ordinances. But, um, I will point out that you're requesting something of other people, which I'm assuming they're going to grant. But you have agency yourself. You can write an ordinance and spend money and hire an outside auditor to do a forensic audit. And a forensic audit is what, in my very limited understanding of budgets, is really what you need. You're asking for a shotgun blast here, covering everything for plus or minus three years, when you really need to know what the hell happened to the money. Where did it go? When did it go? And is it ever going to come back? So I think you would need the words forensic audit, and I don't know that you need to request. I think you need an ordinance where you spend money, you hire somebody, and you do it because you are the legislative branch. Your responsibility and your power is the purse, and you don't actually need to request other people to do anything. You can, of course. It's not bad. It's not evil, but I think it's insufficient. I think you need to spend money, hire a forensic auditor, come in and do the work yourself in addition to whatever anybody else chooses to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Burnside. Um, I want to comment on this briefly. Essentially, ladies and gentlemen, what we're seeking to do... We obviously have a spending problem. The challenge we've had for the last couple of years, and we've seen it through looking through past budgets, is that overtime and personnel spending was not properly accounted for. Um, because departments... Now, I'll use the NOPD as an example, though it is not the only department. When departments had unfilled positions, when departments had unfilled payroll, essentially what's been happening for several years is that when overtime went over or was not accounted for, it would be absorbed within those departments' budgets because the budgets were essentially overbudgeted. What we saw last year is that when there was typically no accounting for overtime, overtime, though slightly higher due to things like the terrorist attack and SER-1... Sorry, yeah, SER-1 designation of Mardi Gras, the reality is that overtime has always been trending higher in multiple departments. What we're trying to do is to get a handle on how we got to this place financially, using the resources of the state and our local inspector general to go over our spending practices. Because the reality is that unless we analyze how we got here and we change the way we budget, we are destined to repeat it. So I respectfully disagree with Mr. Burnside. I think that when you look statutorily and constitutionally at the reach and ability of the legislative auditor, he has more authority when invited to come into an agency or without invitation to really dig into the finances, even more so than a hired auditor. So this is an effort for us to get our house in order. Councilmember Harris?
I have a question for a CAO Joe Threat, if you don't mind coming up. And this is specifically about the request for reimbursement for the terrorist attack overtime and the SER-1 overtime. Have we made that request to the state? Have we made it to the best?
Uh, we have. We have, Councilmember Harris, we have made the request to the state. I think we, you know, thanks to the state, we got one reimbursement for the terrorist attack back to NOPD for about $900,000. Uh, I think moving forward, when we have instances like this or we move up to that SER-1 category, I think this year we're going to be in SER-2, that when we start those negotiation with Department of Homeland Security, it's always, if we take somebody's advice, they have to bring the purse strings with them. It's a lot going on in the city where we pick up the bill for law enforcement, and I think that model, you know, in coordination with the state, has got to change. Uh, as we ramp up, even this, as early as November, with Bayou Classic and all, you know, our fall workup through in the first of the year, we're going to have to look at these very closely. And if I could, Councilmember Morell, I think that, uh, you know, when everyone knew in January, um, that we had a possibility of a deficit and a cash crunch, I think the, um, cost constraints that we have in place right now with our circulars, hiring freezes and restrictions of overtime, you know, I think it was overcome by events. January, I know a letter went to the council, Councilmember Jeruso, saying, "Hey, this was a possibility as we started dipping into our fund balance." And with the terrorist event, snowstorm, Super Bowl and everything else, and we missed the opportunity to make the changes we're trying to make now. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the council's support in the revenue loan, uh, the meetings that are happening today and Thursday. And this was the gap financing that we needed, uh, when I talked to the council before, to get through the first of the year and then start, uh, plusing up that fund balance.
If... I have a follow-up question. If for some reason we do not receive the approval of the bond council, do we have enough money in our rainy day fund to cover payroll for December and November?
Uh, I'll let you go.
We are funded through November... The 12th of November now. If we activate the rainy day fund, we will see coverage through December. And we also have sales tax revenues that are coming in on a monthly basis. So that does help with funding, you know, regular operational expenses. So...
So if for some reason bond council says no, or the bond commission says no, then we have enough money in the rainy day fund to cover payroll?
Just...
December?
Just payroll.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And may I add to that, and good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Thank you so much for having this meeting today, particularly on this matter. Relative to the certificate of indebtedness and, of course, going to bond council, you know, that's a formality. Uh, we're not asking the state for any money. We're just wanting that certificate so that we can provide cash flow again through the end of the year. We want to reduce any pressure on that rainy day fund as we indicated to the council in 2023, as we indicated to the council in 2024, as we indicated to the council at the top of 2025, because our bond, not just our rating agencies are watching, and we do not want to risk further reduction in terms of that rating. So we need to protect the rainy day fund, and that's why we've asked for this COI, much like we did in 2020, when we were waiting for CARES Act money to come through. So this is the same thing that the previous council... I know Councilman Moreno, Councilman Jeruso, you were part of that. And then in '21, when we embraced the practices of looking at the forecast from 2021 to '25 for the full recovery of the city, which set on this year, 2025. So we're simply asking for what we've had to do in the past for a gap filler, cash flow. And it's tied to receivables, expenditures that we do expect to gain in. But right now, being able to issue that COI, that loan, it really relieves the pressure. Not only of us meeting payroll, but the pressure off of our precious emergency fund.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree. I just want to make sure if some... Something happened.
I understand. Well, and I do understand that.
We have a backup plan.
Yes, ma'am. And especially with, um, information or comments made. Yes, ma'am, and especially with information or comments made, I know after the recommendation of the governor on yesterday, initially saying that he was requesting denial. But I believe that with greater information and a better understanding, my hope is that the commission will, will move forward. And so that's where we are. We definitely, as I mentioned, want to relieve any pressure on the emergency fund. And just saying that, I'm thinking about our brothers and sisters in Jamaica, you know, experiencing this Hurricane Melissa, and just know that we have reached out as a city as well, pre-storm and, of course, post-storm. But our receipts are in order.
Council Vice President Moreno.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris and Madam Mayor, just to follow up on, on what you all were speaking about. Madam Mayor, you talked about, you know, obviously, the governor's initial statement and then, you know, additional information coming forward, and, and really additional steps also being taken. And, and the steps that, that are being taken right now are to alleviate concerns that the state may be having around ensuring that there is oversight over the money should we be able to get approval from bond council to go out and get our loan, that expenditures will have proper oversight. And that's, that's really what, what we're doing today with the, with really the three major steps that we're taking. The first is, of course, with the investigation from the Legislative Auditor and also the Inspector General, and then a resolution that we'll take up in just a bit that, that Councilmember Jeruso is leading, that will ensure that there are several steps taken by the Department of Finance as far as reporting of different expenditures, and those reports will go straight to the Legislative Auditor. It's on the, the resolution that we'll take up under suspension, which will also be coupled with an ordinance that will create a special fund that will put the, the, the funding that we do receive from the loan in a specific fund so it's easier to track and, and monitor. And then finally, what you, you just introduced, Mr. President, on the ballot measure to ensure that we can better track expenditures and the movement of expenditures moving forward, and that if there is going to be additional monies needed by a particular department above their appropriation, they have to come back to the council and ask. So all of these things, as, as we've been talking about, are all to ensure and provide assurances that should we receive this money, there are a lot of checks and balances and oversight, and we're also taking additional steps to ensure that something like this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Roni.
Is the report, Councilmember Jeruso, that you're recommending, is that similar to the, the monthly report, the budget to actual?
No.
Do we have details on that?
Yeah, it's more detailed than that. It's monthly budget to actual expenditure reports, weekly yearday payroll reports, weekly overtime reports, because that has been an issue, monthly 90-day overtime spending projections, bi-weekly expenditure reduction reports, monthly cash flow projections, and monthly reports on city banks and accounts. And, and the point of this, again, let me just be clear about this. The point of this is not to be punitive. The point of this is to make sure that particularly as we're trying to get this money, that people see where we are, what we're doing, and that we're all working collectively to share data and making as informed decisions as possible.
Sure. So what I will add is just that it seems to be a bit redundant, but overshoring, that's not, that's not a problem. You already have an independent auditor. Your auditor is ours, it's Cars, Riggs, and Ingram, as you know. We also have financial advisors, PFM, that also issued to you all in writing in July of '26, 2024, relative to our financial position, relative to the fund balance and the like. And we're already working with the Legislative Auditor and LMA. So these are practices already in place, but that's okay, because, hey, you can always do better. And of course, as it relates to the city council being that body responsible, you know, of passing the budget and, of course, budget ordinances and the like. But I would also ask, you know, there needs to be a lean on your own fiscal staff, that you have your own fiscal staff, not on the second floor, but on your first floor. Play very well as well, and, and they're there to advise you as well. So it seems to be very clear that it's not so much as what you didn't know, but it seems to be a lack of understanding. But working together, I believe that you'll have the tools necessary so that you will not get here in, in the future. So we welcome investigations. It seems like that's been the hallmark of, of, of the tenure here, pretty much of this council, and it only reassures us that your finance, your financial and fiscal staff within the administration, you know, they have repeatedly not only shared information, but we've been here before relative to a COI. So we've demonstrated in the past that when we get a loan, we've not only paid back, but it makes us even better moving forward. And when we did these COI in 2020, that was 100 million. And you remember, we didn't even have to go for the whole loan because the CARES Act money came on in, although we didn't get our full share because the CARES Act money initially, remember, it went to the state. And the state did not fully reimburse the city of New Orleans for the expenditures relative to beating back and leading in the COVID-19, saving lives. But at the end of the day, it moves towards solutions. The solution today is what you all have passed previously, the COI for 125 million. We're now looking to the bond commission to do theirs. The city will then hopefully get that, alleviate the pressures all around, no furloughs, no layoffs and the like, keep the operations flowing, and of course, in a better position in transition of the new administration. So I feel very confident and good in terms of where we are and the steps, not mentioned here, but the steps that we have worked on collectively in terms of this deficit as well as cash flow. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel. That's what I told Councilmember Morell and Councilmember Moreno on yesterday by email, just wanting to make sure that we were on the same page, united in this, moving forward from the meeting in Baton Rouge on today, and of course, moving to the bond commission on tomorrow.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yeah, staying in terms of reporting and responsibility and being accountable, the resolution mentioned reporting, but it doesn't mention timelines. Is there, can we amend it to include timeline, timelines so that at least the public will know when reports will be issued?
Well, there's.
Or there'll be a timeline to follow, or is it just random reports issued?
It, it's, there's two things. One is, the resolution does say in the second to last be it resolved paragraph on page two, that the council shall require Director of Department of Finance to keep detailed and accurate records of all fund monies and to submit on the second Monday of each month a written report to the council.
I think we're on different ordinances. This, this is my ordinance or your ordinance?
Which one? I'm at.
No, I'm on JP.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, well, the, because we're inviting them in to do these different investigations, Councilmember Thomas, we would have to meet with them after they choose to come in, and we can establish those timelines at that time.
Okay, so timelines will be established.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll move.
This is on the amendment?
Amendment, yes. Second by Vice President Moreno, please vote your machines.
Councilmember, there was an online comment. Do you want me to add it to the record?
No, we can, we.
You want to read it when we do the amendment?
Yes, we're going to do the full thing. Right now, we're doing the amendment. All right. Amendment has passed, seven oh. Now on, go ahead, one more comment.
This is from Zach Smith. He says, please subpoena the former CAO to come explain how and/or why his math was so messy. The folks that work in City Hall deserve to see their former leader held accountable for this mess that is upending their lives and the lives of the taxpayers. A golden parachute to the zoo reeks of business as usual. The least we can do is ask him some basic questions in public for all he, all to hear the word salad on this topic. While the city seems to have bigger fish, fish to fry due to the sheer incompetence or willful neglect of said former CAO, I urge you to show that no official is above the process when it comes to righting a wrong. This council has subpoenaed several folks for far fewer infractions. Hold him to account.
Thank you. Just to address that real quickly, part of having the Legislative Auditor and the Inspector General involved, and part of it going back to 2022, they will have the authority to subpoena and deal with him directly as they both have subpoena power. With that, I will move to adopt as amended. Can I get a second? Second by Council Vice President Moreno, please vote your machines. Seven yays, no nays. It's adopted. We have one more resolution or suspension.
We have Resolution R 25561 by councilmembers Jeruso, Morell, Moreno, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. A resolution expressing the city's commitment to fiscal responsibility in the use and expenditure of revenue notes to meet the city's 2025 budget year payroll obligation to pay active city employee wages and to extensive oversight by the legislative, Louisiana Legislative Auditor and the city council of the monies received through the revenue notes. Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to receive this resolution.
I'm going to do this by voice vote, given what the AGA said, so I will move, may I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Morell, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Seven yays orally recorded.
Now to add.
Now, I move to add this to the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Morell, all in favor. Aye. Seven affirmative votes.
Now you can vote.
Yeah, okay. Well, just very quickly, the resolution, okay, why don't we go to Mr. Burnside? Go ahead, Mr. Burnside, do you want to comment?
Mike O'Eric, Burnside, 2215 Felicity. So budgeting for outcomes was a somewhat of a failed experiment. I would suggest, however, that given the witness here today, that we have sufficient money to handle payroll, that perhaps we don't need a payday loan. We might want to consider revenue enhancements. We might want to consider whether we want to raise the sales tax from 2.5 to 3, or perhaps we might want to contain the idea or consider the idea of a sanitation fee. The general fund substitutes in $34 million a year to subsidize sanitation, which comes off the backs of the property owners, not necessarily the sanitation users. We could roll forward the property tax and pay our bills, or we could lower our bills. We could find a way to get rid of the firefighter's pension, which is $60 million a year, which means for the last 10 years, it's a half a billion dollars. We have business that we need to put in order, and papering it over with a loan is only going to kick a can down the road. If this had happened nine months ago, we would be in a different position than we are now. And if we don't solve it for another nine months, we will be yet in a different position than we are today. So I would not actually, given the testimony here today that the payroll is not in danger, consider that the emergency fund's only 5%, when if we want to stabilize our bond, it needs to be 10%. We have issues that we can deal with, and asking for a loan merely postpones the day when we will actually have to deal with them. I would ask you to rethink, given the testimony here today, that the payroll is not in danger, that perhaps this is not needed. We asked for a $90 million loan already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. The resolution does three things and, and is a vote today in anticipation of the ordinance which would codify those three things. The first is, it creates the City of New Orleans Employee Emergency Payroll Fund. That fund would be the place in which the revenue proceeds would go. Then number two is that it clearly states that the money in that fund, to the point Councilmember Harris made, was that these obligations would not be used for other general fund, but to ensure that city employees are being paid. And then to the points that have been raised on the dais by Councilmember Moreno and Thomas, it, it not only provides a schedule of when we are supposed to get reports, the second Monday of each month, but then also provides other reporting deadlines, A through G in the resolution. For anybody who doesn't have a copy, I've asked my staff to make 20 copies of the resolution. I know the press is like smiling. So like, the press and, and other people in the audience will have 20 copies of the resolution and the ordinance, so everybody can see them. But it sets forth in here all the different types of reports that are available. It also makes those reports available in a read format to the Legislative Auditor, so that way they can also monitor in real time as well. I think the importance of this is that we are trying to get to that solution place, find a way to build a, a better mousetrap, and ensure that everybody's on the same page and nothing's getting lost in translation. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman, I just wanted to add, and this is something to think about, relative to, you were talking about reports, but it is the need to understand the reports that you receive. So I would ask for you all to consider, especially with the transition coming, orientation of the new council, financial statements and the like, and having them have a say in how it needs to be presented to them for them to have a better understanding. And this came also from the Louisiana auditors in terms of how the information was shared. So to me, it speaks to, again, making it better for the council now and into the future, of understanding the reports that you receive, because there's, we're, we're in no shortage of reports, you know, that have been submitted and even moving forward. But I would say, let's think about an orientation and education around a better understanding of what's in the report and how to really receive it.
Yeah.
It would better understanding.
I appreciate that. I know Councilmember Harris and I think the rest of us during these meetings also requested to receive the data differently each month, and I want to make sure that that get, that happens. Number two, I think the idea particularly for the newer members of understanding what's going on, what their roles are, how to review when they get material is a good one. Third, I can tell you on the way down here, in light of where we are, I did say to our budget office, even though we're in touch, I would recommend a standing weekly meeting to make sure that we understand what's happening, everybody's talking to each other, and also, Madam Mayor, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding or lack of context to state as well. So that way, nobody is blindsiding anybody, there's nobody who doesn't understand, that there's clear and open communication between everybody, because what I don't want to have happen is for us to feel like the state has said something that we didn't anticipate, or for the state to feel like they didn't understand something either. So I want to make sure we, we activate those right now, particularly as we're at this moment.
No, I appreciate that, I really do, and especially your comments to your fiscal staff, Budget Chair you mentioned, because, again, I think it gets overlooked that the council has its own fiscal administration as well, not on the second floor in your offices, I understand that, but I mean on the first floor in terms of, you know, how you have oversight utilities, land use, you know, financial oversight and the like. So thank you for those steps.
Councilwoman Jeruso.
Yes.
I, I can appreciate, you know, the recommendations, because most of this we already provide, with the exception of the 90-day overtime projection. But I do have a question. Much of this, in theory, is a very good idea. We want to make sure we can execute, okay? We want to make sure that this is something we can actually deliver. You did name the Department of Finance exclusively. We will need to include budget on this as well, because there is a balance, right? We pay the bills, but if you're talking about tracking initiatives, we will need to include, you know, our other partners in this. So we want to make sure that it's something that we can deliver, you know, in real time.
That, that makes perfect sense. So, so again, I'll just state, this is sort of the down payment, and Thursday is the vote on the principal, so why don't we get this passed today? And I'm happy to work with the mayor's office, CAO's office, the Finance Department.
Yeah, we'll have to work through that.
Yeah, about, and we can amend the ordinance to make sure that any department that isn't in there is, is added, so that way everybody gets as robust information as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman.
Absolutely. Mr. President.
Yeah, I just want to be very clear. What, what we're putting together today is not a recommendation, it's going to essentially be a requirement for us to access this money. So I want to be very clear that what we passed today, as Councilmember Jeruso said, is really us making an express promise to the state that in order for them to support this, support this measure, this, this documents we can draw down money on our own credit, is going to require us to meet these requirements. So I don't want, I feel like there's a lot of conversation about like, these are suggestions? They're not suggestions. If we don't meet the criteria that's outlined in this resolution... If we don't meet the criteria that's outlined in this resolution and outlined in the fund, we will not be able to draw down the money. So I'm just trying to make clear a clarification.
So how do you see, so will we need to come to, go to the state in order to draw down, or is it just by council action?
The legislative auditor will be essentially in a position of oversight over that fund, and as long as we continue to meet the criteria stated in the fund and the resolution, we'll be able to draw down money. So basically, those timely requirements, if we don't meet them at any given time, the auditor can say, pause, I'm not giving you more money out of this fund to pay bills till you meet said requirement. So I just don't want anyone to have any kind of misunderstanding. This is very specific, and it will be a requirement in order for us to continue to have access to that funding.
I don't anticipate us not meeting those requirements. My question is, will it delay possibly vendor payments or things like that, going through the formality of it all?
It quite possibly could, I would imagine.
Okay.
But the alternative is not having the money. So I mean, I, I don't disagree with you in that it might be additionally somewhat onerous, but the alternative that's being proposed by some people, the fiscal manager, would be infinitely more onerous than dealing with the auditor and meeting their own criteria.
Okay. Well, definitely, Councilmember Morell, thank you for clarifying and being clear on that. And we're also clear in terms of what you're asking for. We know that most of it is what you already provided, but codifying it, I think that that's right. In addition to your most recent comments of not wanting a fiscal administrator, I would say that especially in a transition and, and council member, you know, I've been where you are, and I'm go, I'm, I'm here where you're going. So I would say that's absolutely what you do not want, because that's almost like getting into another consent decree. And with no internal controls meeting this body will have, nor the City of New Orleans. So that is something we definitely do not want, need to avoid, and we're in a position to avoid that, because, again, we're simply asking to be able to take care of ourselves, get a loan, to provide that cash flow, eliminate the pressure on our emergency fund, and move forward with the steps that we have presented previously, and even the material evidence as our rating agencies are requiring us for revenue generation in the future. So we're, we're on the same page. I appreciate the clarity that you've provided.
Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor, you know, we, we agree on that, and, and the, the steps that we're taking today as far as the substitute reporting requirements to the state legislative auditor, that provides really the right level of, of oversight to give the state comfort, to ensure that all the, all the funding that we could be receiving from this loan is, is being spent correctly. And, and we do not need a fiscal administrator coming in by, by any means, not to mention, that would be a, a significant adversarial move by the State of Louisiana, in my opinion, considering that the council is here today, taking these very strong steps to ensure that there are the right checks and balances, to, of course, en, ensure the city council that the money's spent, right, but also the State of Louisiana.
Absolutely. And I would say too, that there are clear examples of fiscal responsibility. Like I said, we've been here before relative to a COI. We were able to stand the city up as it relates to that. We're doing the same thing we've done in the past. So we've demonstrated that we can take care of ourselves, and with the added oversight that you're adding, I mean, hey, that's the future of the City of New Orleans, and it will be under, under your leadership, and we'll be leaving it in good hands as it relates to the staff, and just the, just the competent staff, both on the budget side as well as the revenue side of the operation. And these are employees that work very hard and that will be here, you know, regardless of the transition. So you'll be in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Well, first of all, let me say, thank you, Madam Mayor. Romi, thank you for, uh, uh, being, doing an exemplary job, especially in reporting about our money. Much, much of the posturing by the state isn't new, and we've tried to give examples of the battles that go all the way back, uh, many years, in terms of the state's interest in New Orleans.
Right.
Our assets here.
Right.
But posturing versus positioning versus public policy are three different things.
Right.
And what we say in terms of how we posture is much different from when you talk about what you're willing to allow, and whether the Home Rule Charter is disrespected or not.
Right.
But I'll use an old adage, and I used to watch those Morgues and Chapsley Friday Night Horror Moves with my sister. And it was said that a vampire can't come into your house unless you invite him.
That's it?
So the invitation has to be specific. The, the invitation has to be based around what I need you for in this instance, not in terms of running this city, controlling its assets, and disrespecting our Home Rule Charter. And hopefully, prayerfully, that message will be sent, because, you know, men and women can respect their differences, but I don't need to kiss a ring or bend a knee for you to respect me or promise you something that I'm not willing to give you.
That's right.
So I, and I think that's going to be extremely important moving forward, how we posture, how we position, and how we policy, and how much more we want to open the door so the vampire has access.
Councilman, I, I just commend you on your comments, and there was a reason with the legislative session this year that changed the process and actually making it easier for the state to issue a financial administrator. And, and I believe it was intentional, but I also believe that we're in a good position and that we are asking for the bond commission to approve our 125, and we will be able to do what we've demonstrated in the past, make great use, pay it back, and set this city up for a great future for its transition. And I see that Ali hat you have on, and it makes me think about the world's greatest. I think we have one.
I come in peace.
Amen.
And the spirit of humility.
All right. So I think, I think we're all saying the same thing here, which is, this is a demonstration of fiscal responsibility, setting up necessary safeguards, and making sure that everybody's at the table looking at those in advance, so we're all on the same page. I will move to approve Resolution R. 25561 voice, I would say we do this by voice vote. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno, all in favor, please? Aye. Hearing seven oral yays, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
We have Resolution R. 25559 by councilmembers Jeruso, Morell, Moreno, Moreno, Harris, King, and Thomas. Resolution stating that the council, including both council at large offices, each district office, all central staff offices, the clerk of council's office, immediately stop all purchases that impact the 2025 operating budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We all filed this because we had, we've been sitting and listening to these budget hearings and everybody talking about the hardships they're facing with potential cuts, and the feeling among the council was that if we're asking people not to spend money, then we need to do the same thing. And so this really limits prospective spending unless it's ordered or there's already an existing RFP or RFQ. Mr. Burnside?
Mike O'Reilly, Burnside, 2215, Felicity. So I've been in schools when I was a teacher, and sometimes schools grow because more students come in, sometimes schools shrink because students leave. The needs for a growing school are different than the needs of a shrinking school. You don't want to just not hire, you don't want to just not fire, you want to understand that you have a changed role, and you're going to need a changed staff. It was mentioned that you have a physical office, what was not mentioned is that it has five employees. It was not mentioned that there's gossip among those five employees about who shows up on time and who doesn't. You can't keep track of a $1.8 billion budget with five people. You are a co-equal branch of government. It is your job not merely to have the power of the purse, but the responsibility of the purse. You are elected by the people to be a check and a balance on an executive, on a strong executive, who is strong-willed and has strong desires, but who is not God and is not perfect. It is your job to have the staff necessary, the access to brass necessary, the expertise of having a certified public accountant to assure the people who elect you that the mayor is not God, and the mayor might make a mistake, or one of her employees might make a mistake, and you will check it, and you will balance it out. You need a much stronger physical office than you have. You need at least the equivalent of CUREO. You have CUREO, which keeps an eye on energy, that's what CUREO does. They go to court, they sue, they have lawyers, they go back and forth, different filings, it's all very complicated. All you got to do is look at the very first member of the agenda item, and it's always lengthy and it's always full of stuff. You need the equivalent of CUREO. The people need you, and you are part-time.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside.
Councilmembers, before you vote on it.
Yes.
Councilmember Green would like to be added.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Absolutely. I would, I thought everybody was, and if anybody isn't, happy to add them right now.
Councilmember Jeruso, there's one online comment.
Let's read it.
This is from Gerald, Gerald Lanessa. The New Orleans City Council is moving too slowly to address the city's growing spending crisis. City Hall is spending over $200 million, more than it collects in revenue. Only immediate and significant cuts to the more than $500 million payroll spending can stop the financial bleeding. City Hall's headcount must be drastically reduced. Council members should also lead by example. The taxpayer vehicles and drivers should have gone long ago. The council and mayor should drive and park their own cars, just like everyone else. Stop the deflecting and finger pointing act today to balance the budget by reducing the real spending to match actual revenue.
Okay. I think not spending more money is exactly what we're doing, so I, I appreciate the spirit which we're enacting. So I've moved on this, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Morell, all in favor? Aye. Seven yays, no nays. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember, are we finished?
I believe so.
Okay, we need to our turn.
Councilmember Moreno moves to adjourn. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, we are adjourned, so we will go directly into our budget meetings, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, it's so good to see you, and welcome back.
All right. So we'll just, why don't we have like a minute for people to clear the chambers, and time is 10:31, why don't we just start these proceedings in about a minute or two with municipal and traffic court.